Hold on, please. Kevin McCaffrey here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Jack and Eily here.
Steve Gomer over here.
Next, perfect timing. Next up is public comments items on the agenda.
I say the pledge allegiance.
We can do it. All right, join us for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is fellow comments items on the agenda. Are there any comments?
Sure.
Okay. Next up, joining me with the town hall building committee. I'd ask the building committee to open up their meeting if they have not already.
Why don't you and I go off with them if you guys want to.
Sure. Let me.
Sorry, we didn't clear the supper table.
Possession is not intense in the law.
You better leave it. This stage in the front of the deck. I might just spin it right on the window. If they were thin men, I'd say yes.
I have some of those up there, too.
Get all over by chief.
So I wanted to do two things, a proposed budget discussion and a vote and a proposed design alternative discussion and vote. So if we could do the presentation and then at the end of the presentation have the questions. So I'll have the joint meeting.
So would you, we don't have a quorum, but I will call the town hall building committee order. Would you like to have a conversation about the financing end of it prior to the options?
Financing first, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think if we know what the town can afford, maybe we can look at the options.
Okay, so we do have a PowerPoint that the architects have put together, but we will do that. That's strictly based on the options.
Can I ask to have Don come up?
Sure. So Don, just come on up.
You get the wheelie chair.
Oh, wow. So based upon the conversation last week, went back and said, Don, can we run some numbers? So what's in front of you on this sheet, what's behind you on the screen are project costs we're trying to describe more detailed for level debt payments at six, for six million dollars of debt, eight million dollars of debt, ten and twelve, three different interest rates, three, three and a half, and four, which I would say would be a optimistic, moderate, and more pessimistic numbers just to be safe. And breaks it out. Do you want to describe what's up in front of them?
Yeah, so as Chris mentioned, they're at three different interest rate points for each estimated amount that we would borrow for. Basically then breaking it down into what the, what the effect on the tax rate for the debt exclusion would be. So the fourth column over calculates based on each scenario, what portion of the tax rate would be attributed to that debt service. And then it takes a step further, taking the average single family home and the median family home and basically what each level of debt service would add to your tax bill in each fiscal year.
So for example, if you looked at the eight, the second batch, which is the eight million dollar numbers, if you go across, the annual debt service would be at three percent, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, three and a half percent, five sixty-three, and at four, five hundred nine. Keep going across, we keep the town's assessed valuation the same, just for the purposes of this conversation, obviously that changes, but also the tax rates adjust. But to keep everything stable, the average home and co assets at the moment, nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, so three percent to cover that note for 20 years would be a hundred and seventy-six dollars for the average home. The median home, which is half above, half below, remember there's a lot of larger homes that pull that number up, the average up, it's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars at three percent. And again, if you keep going up, obviously it's a hundred and forty-five for a half percent interest rate, and a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty-two for the median home at four percent over 20 years. And again, you can look at the estimates for a six million, an eight million, a ten and a twelve. If you go up top, Don also gave you a hundred thou, so if you want to just add the numbers, you know, like go to, you know, eight point five, you could just do that hundred thousand dollar number up there and just multiply by five, what that would mean. Would that be right?
Yeah, so every hundred thousand dollars of debt service is three cents on your, on the tax rate, twenty-six dollars on your median, single family home. So then, yeah, if you want to see what five hundred thousand debt service would be, you just multiply it by five. Eight hundred thousand, multiply it by eight, and so on and so forth.
Okay. So that gives the overall view of what it would affect each individual.
If you, for pure, for pure debt exclusion, for different percent.
So this is strict debt exclusion, no other factors, bonding at that level.
Correct. If you flip the page over, you've got to take a little bit more detail. This is just an example, so again, so don't, you know, so, so this gives you, this is a sample example, sort of, let's say you take eight million dollars of a debt exclusion. You added some CPC money, and again, for the purpose of conversation, the number three man's been kicking around. So put three million in, you take a million from capital stabilization, which is, and again, this is just something that Sam, this is just based on a conversation that Sam had broached, not that this is a commission, this is not committing anything. So seventy-five thousand a year, a million dollars is the trend, when you do it, when you go backwards, it's seventy-five thousand a year for 20 years, basically at three and a half percent. The same thing works for CPC, by the way, which we'll see as we go through the other estimates. So that gets you a twelve million dollar total cost with only eight million dollars actually being excluded debt that's going on someone's taxable. The other two are being incorporated to pre-existing revenue streams. If you look at CPC for, just to give some ideas, and again, no committing, was not committing CPC to anything. If you do a hundred percent debt, it's two hundred and twelve thousand of their annual amount would have to go to that. You split it fifty-fifty and again, correct me if I'm doing it wrong. It's a hundred and six thousand and one point five million cash, and then obviously if you do one-third, two-thirds, it's a million cash and two million, which is a hundred and forty-one. And then you want to walk through the, notice the bottom?
Yeah, so then at the bottom, I just kind of summarize, based on where we're at now with our CPC fund balance, the undesignated projected to end about one point nine million at the end of the year. So essentially, speaking of, if you just wanted to contribute just pure cash from that fund and what was available, would be about one point nine. But then I just took it a step further, and on average, the last three or four years, annual CPC revenue is about six hundred thousand. And based on national laws, you need to allocate 10% to each of the various sources, open space, historic resources, and then community housing, and then there's also a 5% admin that you can budget in there, not that it's always used. So just for round numbers, bringing it down to about an average of 390 a year of annual unallocated revenue that. If it's not committed or used, it just falls to the bottom line and, and the year undesignated fund balance for CPC.
Yeah, within CPC, yeah.
And those are renewed each year with the CPC money, so.
Correct. Again, it could be based on the last three years since 18, we don't have the current data right now, the last three years was about an average of six hundred thousand a year of revenue.
And again, this is historic, this is historic property, so this can be, you can use the historic application, too. Or, and there are other historic buildings and towns, too, so you know, you could still, you could still be using a fair chunk of CPC and sell a lot of money available for other projects. So even if you borrowed the whole thing, you'd still have almost four hundred thousand a year of available funding from CPC for a variety of projects. So, and that's if you bonded three million dollars over 20 years. So, again, these are just examples, but I think they show, you know, we're very, you know, of this, and this is not every option out there, right? I mean, there's other, there's other possible revenue sources and funds that you could tap, and you could, and again, obviously we have a more robust conversation. I did talk to Sam tonight as he was shuttling at the Boston front of the meeting, and his copy of this, it's all on the table, open for discussion, but, you know, we still have conversations to have. So there's no commitment of anything, except to have a conversation. So, and again, the seventy-five thousand is an example of, you know, again, that seventy-five thousand wouldn't be available for anything else if you put that from capital stabilization. So I mean, that's the.
That's the annual debt services, the seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, that would, that would pay for a million bucks, basically, over 20 years. So if you kind of, you kind of value, say, let's, if we've got to take a million, no, you can also just take a million out in cash, too, that would, that would, that would mean you preclude other things, or you could find out over half the amount of time, or, or again, you know, maybe you ramp it up more quickly if there's a very good year and the town happens to have extra cash, because we have a couple of, you know, like, we had a couple, two years ago, we had a couple of tax title houses, and that can get it just to the project. It could be, you know, with some policy set up saying, we want to minimize the amount of debt that goes onto the taxpayers, so let's maximize every other fund. Obviously, there's things that are already being pursued, there's a grant that's been filed for, there's another one that's being pended, that's pending, that we'll be filing for later this year, depending on how this all plays out. And there's always other money to be, to be, you know, to be moved, to be sought after aggressively. And I think there's real opportunities, and I, you know, it's been good to see, and I get, I'm getting good vibes from the, you know, for example, Sasha Arts Center, Classical Music Club, and others who want to partner, and even the, you know, economic, there's a small economic development component, and there's also just a big cultural component in general, and civic component, that there's funding we've never sought before with the cultural council. And again, it could be for very specific things, too. You could say, well, we want to fund all the lighting or something, you know, in the center, or you want to fund lots of a stage or the dressing rooms, or things like that. There's various targeted pieces you can do in the, in the cultural piece that could be sought. So this is just a starting, it's a starting point of the conversation. We can also talk a little bit about the 10-year capital plan if you want to, we have a quick draw.
Well, within that, how does the, how does this fit within that 10-year?
So let's, can you pull that one up, Tracy? Do we have, so I don't, so blow this up, okay?
Well, I can see that.
Is that a hundred percent?
Put on your readers.
It's intuitive.
More than readers.
You get a hundred fifty percent.
Get your binoculars.
Yeah, a hundred fifty percent.
There we go.
Is that better, you want to go a little bit bigger, is that all right?
It's okay.
All right, so, so, so I, I, let's have, so.
You can slide that if you anchor the corner.
Yeah, you can just, you can just hit that big bar at the bottom, Tracy, the gray, just roll on that, yeah. So just scroll across for a second to see how big the chart is, so, and then, and then go, and then go back to the left, all the way to the left.
I won't be alive.
And then, you want to walk through this, because you, you could explain this to the better eye count at this point, is that fair?
Yeah, so Chris basically asked me to look through our capital requests from the 10-year capital plan. And basically, if you go down the chart a little bit, it shows what our total asks are for each year. And then due to the SADLAS asks, we kind of went through and identified any projects, say, over 275, and instead of paying cash for those, what would this schedule look like if we pulled those out and tried to model something of maybe borrowing for three years instead of spreading that payment out? For anything over five hundred thousand, I think we spread it over five years. Anything over a million was spread over 10. And so essentially, what you see is, in fiscal 19, we end with about six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That's fully funding every cash ask at one point five million. Now, follow that through each year, you have, you begin a balance, if anything, you transfer in from capital stabilization, which, as you borrow, is decreased. So this follows through to what the capital budget committee has already committed. So we have some current lease commitments, some current debt service commitments, and then it brings in, out kind of a smoothing of what we did with these larger projects. And then when you get towards the bottom, you have your cash requests, and then the negative amounts are essentially, if you want to break even, just for that fiscal year, these are the amount of cash requests that we'd have to deny and say, we don't have, we don't have room this year for these. Again, these are still like the gross numbers, so we amortize, say, the school roof, million dollar school roof over 10 years at the full magnitude, even though we know there's a possibility of MSBA grant funding and things of that nature. So it's a very, very, I guess, draft schedule, but just something to get the conversation started and see where to go from here. Now, to your point, Steve, the only thing we didn't layer in at this point, because it was the last minute, was putting in that seventy-five thousand a year for the town hall project.
So what's your, forgive me, let's go back for just a second.
Sure.
You're, you're looking at potential debt service commitments as an example, you're looking at ambulance, pumper replacement, boat ramp.
Is it easier to see, when you scroll down, the next section, is you to see the projects that are broken, or is?
Yeah, you can, yep.
Well, where I'm, where I'm going with this is, you're, you're looking at capitalizing as opposed to paying cash.
Right, for big, for items that are half a million or more.
But, and so let's go back for just a second. That would seem to me to either fully leverage or fully stress the fund.
It would le, I think leverage is, well, you can use, you can use either term you like, but.
Well, it depends upon the interest rate, whether it's stress or leverage.
Exactly, right. So the, the conversation we've been having, and we're going to have a more robust conversation with capital, the capital budget committee, Sam has met with us a couple of times internally, is to, to take our already, our debt plan and kind of layer another piece into it and say, okay, our goal is, if something costs, I, I forget the numbers we're working with.
Zero to, I think up to 250 you pay cash for, 250 to five, you can kind of consider as if better to pay cash, is the market at a reasonable rate to bond. And then anything over 500 was really strongly considered bond. And if you bring this schedule down a little bit, you can see the comparison.
Can I make a suggestion here? Because it's not just the cost of the item that has to go into the consideration, but the duration of it, right? If you're bonding, if you're bonding a construction project over 20 years, but you reasonably expect that, that building to last for 50 or 60, well, that's a, that's a really wise use of leverage. But if you're buying a police car, all right, or several of them, right, and you're, you're bonding that, even though the, the ultimate purchase might be three hundred thousand dollars for a whole bunch of vehicles, the useful life is much shorter, so it, it doesn't make as much sense. And so that, I'd have to ask if we'd also give that some consideration.
Oh, absolutely.
The ultimate, the ultimate result of that should be, or could be, that you actually have more room than you think in this fund to use, to use leverage prudently for specific long-run projects.
Right. Could you scroll down on the right side?
To me, I amortize these over a very short period compared to their lifespan, due to, from conversations that, you know, capital budget wants to pay cash for everything, I figured that the shortest period would be best, so.
Okay.
In ambulance, I amortize that over three years. Ambulance's life is going to be 20, 10, 15.
Well, usually, I think we do, I think we do 10.
No, they're normally coming back within six or seven. So pumper truck, on the other hand, is 21.
Well, pumper I did for seven.
Okay.
So these are definitely, not inflated number, but amortizing over a much shorter lifespan than what.
Conservative.
Right.
Well, it, it does a good job of, of.
It's a starting point.
Well, it does a good job of helping to inform all of us what the potential buying power of that fund can be. But the ultimate question is, where's the pressure point? And can, or, you know, out of this, out of what we're looking at here, can this fund support, at the moment, a projected seventy-five thousand dollar outflow for 20 years for one project without thinking something else? And then, you know, of course, we'd have the same question to ask for CPC, because we're sitting here talking about funding that we have no discretion about, but, but will need to go forward to ask for.
Just on the CPC funding, I just think it's important to, to note how CPC funding works, because it's almost similar to, to how capital budget committee works. It's really that, I mean, the town would be the applicant for whatever we determine based on conversations, we want to seek for funding. The CPC committee reviews and evaluates and compares it to other requests in their fund balance, and they make a recommendation. It ultimately is going to be driven, that conversation's going to be driven the exact same way, and I think that's important to make clear. It's not the CPC committee, it's really, they're just evaluating it, just like capital budget evaluates their capital requests, capital budget advisory will also weigh in the CPC, and then we recommend it to town meetings. So ultimately, we, you know, as selectmen and with the budget, will, will drive that conversation and recommendation.
So these are just starting points for conversation, and I think they show, you know, the options. Now, again, are there other things in the, in the timeline? Yeah, we have a potential public safety conversation, well, we have a commerce, public safety billing conversation to have. In fact, it started in a very small way with advisory last week, because we were talking about the public safety budgets, police and fire. So it's, you know, we need to have those, and after we clear this, we have to have a more robust conversation. But there, we did, we have a holding number of what we, that we'll layer in, too. That could potentially be an exclude debt, that could also be something that we, because it has a public safety component, there might be other money that we could tap that we couldn't tap for town hall. There might be public safety, you know, homeland security or other money that we might be able to find, or something regional, if we found a way to share some facility, right? And there's a premium, and again, we, I think the town has become much more, there's been a great foundation, and we're getting better and better every year we do this, so as you look 10 years out, you're like, okay, the school roofs are coming up in X number of years, and you need to have at least, I think it's 20 years on the roof. Before the MSBA will, will consider it. Well, you hit that sweet spot, you plan for it, you apply, and then you see what you get. And, you know, those have to be done, right? The roofs have to be done. Can you squeeze a piece of DPW equipment, maybe an extra year? Well, maybe, I mean, you don't want to have Carl MacGyver everything all the time, but there's just things you juggle and you go back and forth.
MacGyver them, or.
MacGyver them, yes, you and MacGyver. So, and, so, but all the big projects were, in this scenario, all the big projects are funded, because those are the ones you really have, you can't not do the roof, right? You can't not replace an ambulance, you can't, you know, if we're going to have, you know, salt shed has to be replaced. There's actually an economic value to that, because the salt shed, if we can buy a bunch of salt at once in store for the whole year, we can handle storms better, we can get a better price potentially. So there's, you know, those projects all get funded. Some of the smaller ones, you know, you might be able to juggle and move around and maybe find alternative funding sources, and that's what, that's what happens every year, anyway. You know, there's always a, an ask plus, and then there's a fundable, and you, and there's a robust process, which gets more robust every year about how we, how we go through those things. So I think it's a good, I hope this is, you know, this is, this is, again, this is the next step in the conversation, and Don is ready to continue to deep dive. And I want to thank folks who've already been giving a lot of their time and input for this, for this round of the conversation, which is, which is, again, an ongoing conversation. I think at this point, it does show that there's options, there are reasonable options that don't, that don't, again, even apart from town hall, the town has to have conversations about, you know, doing long-term capital maintenance and capital equipment replacement robustly, and that's, that's been happening. So we're going to continue with a robust conversation. And, you know, in the long term, the other, the next big number is, you know, some kind of public safety facility upgrade. And then down the road, you know, maybe something at Public Works, sure maintain the schools properly. And, and so with those are the conversations that we're having regularly, and we've also committed to looking at this long-range, the 10-year plan twice a year, once in the spring after things are, you know, things are funded for the year. And then, again, as we start the process in the fall and update and freshen it. So, you know, we're always looking at least 10 years out, at least a couple times a year and freshening the plan and saying, well, maybe some things move up, maybe some things, oh, there's a new, the administrator, banker administration's now really gung ho on X, let's go for that funding now, or, you know, school roofs are the hot thing this year for replacements, you know, because it was a bad winter, and maybe we need to, you know, go for that. And those are the things we look at. You know, I, I'd love to do regional sweepers, I mean, I don't want to go, we can go off on a lot of these specifics, but there might be equipment that we can share with other, with another community, and we could say, okay, we know that we need to replace it for three years, let's start talking to our neighbors, see if we can't share a piece of equipment and work it co-collaboratively into our plans. So, this is a, this is a helpful start, and I hope.
This is very helpful.
Yeah. So I just, it's great, and this is, I think, what we asked for, and thanks for all your hard work. Just want to caution everybody that we've had a really good run for the last seven years, and we've had new growth that we can count on, we've had turnbacks because of our new accounting system, and we've had lots of, you know, prepays that have been great and really helped us maintain our stabilization. You know, if we got a downturn in real estate values, you know, we'd have less money in CPC, we'd have less new growth, we'd start feeling the squeeze on, on cash flow, and all of a sudden, we might not have money to put into stabilization funds. So my cautionary tale is, let's not leverage these stabilization funds too much to the point where they choke themselves off, right? I've always been really concerned about leveraging capital and leveraging CPC to the point where we just choke ourselves out. I mean, you know, I don't have to go to town meeting and explain to the voters why we don't have enough cash flow in the CPC fund to pay the principal and interest on the borrowing, right? So I think we've got to be, I mean, I, I love the idea, I love the way we're thinking about this. This is really, I think, the way we should be thinking about it, but we also have to be a little bit prudent about how leveraged we get on these funds. Because overall, total leverage is going to be the same, no matter what, we're just being creative about what we're leveraging, you know, and, and I'm glad we're doing it, because I think that's what we asked for today.
So I think the, I agree, I mean, I think over leveraging the CPC funds would be one thing. It would take a, a large downturn to see a significant drop in CPC monies that come in, but regardless, you know, you would want almost less in the stabilization in CPC and more in the excluded debt point of view. You can always go back off on the excluded debt, because as you spend it, you wouldn't necessarily have to bond it, so you'd go for a, let's say you have a 15 million dollar, no greater than, you wouldn't necessarily use it, you know, it's like the bank account, you've got the reserve there, if you need it.
Yes, we would.
Home equity loan.
We've done it many times.
But it's like having a home equity loan where you, where you have.
New sheriff in town.
Where you have the home equity loan available, only using it if you absolutely necessarily need it. You know, I, I look at, you know, the, the cost structure here, it's similar to what I do with college. You have the price, you have the ways to fund it, you've got loans, you've got grants, and some of this may come in, but you know the price is still there, and the best thing you can do is say, we're going to go for the price and then find ways to pay for it. So I think that, as Jack said, you know, if you over emphasize CPA and capital stabilization, you may run into problems down the road, not a huge problem, leaning more towards an exclusionary debt tail.
So here's my concern about that. You know, it's an implied budget, and if we go to, if we go to town meeting and we ask for 10 instead of eight, we're implying that we're willing, very willing and able to spend 10 million on the administrative building, and I personally would be very uncomfortable with that. I like the implied budget, the way we have it here, we're implying that we can go eight million for the administrative portion and four million for Old Town Hall. And I, you know, and I think there's a lot of reality in that, so I would be very, I would be very uncomfortable leveraging the, the town meeting ask has to be thought about. I think it's important we think about it before we agree to it.
I have a question for Jack. So I just want to clarify, are you, is your concern a concept that says, let's maximize the leverage that you can put on the fund? Or are you, not simply, are you, are you generally against using some leverage in the fund?
I'm okay with some leverage in the fund, as long as the cash flow into the fund can cover it. And maybe, you know, maybe it's, I don't know what the ratio is, maybe it's 50% coverage? You know, and if CPC kept that 2 million in the fund and then leveraged without spending down the 2, 2 million, I'd be very comfortable with that kind of leverage that we're talking about. But if they go and spend the 2 million and don't leave it in the checking account, I think we're asking for trouble.
Well, and to my earlier point, that, I think that's a conversation we drive.
That was, that was step one of my, my. Can I finish with my floor commentary? Look, the folks sitting here tonight may be committed to a financing plan that restricts the request for exclusion and commits themselves to additional resources both here in, in our, our current financing structure and outside, grants and all that, all right? Chris may commit himself to that, but there's no assurance that when this project finally gets underway, that any of us are still sitting at this table, that Chris is still here, no noise, I'm not trying to forecast the future. And I, and I've been around.
I've been around the two years.
I've, I've been around the finances of the town long enough to recognize that promises made by the folks elected are as good as their term. It's not, not that they're, not their intent, but it's as good as their term. A lot of things can change, and a lot of things can change those assurances. I would, I personally feel much more comfortable limiting the request for debt exclusion to what is necessary. what is necessary, limiting the financing plan to what we believe we can actually execute. If, if the requirement is for more than that, and we believe that that can be backfilled with.
Grants.
Well, yeah, with, with outside resources, grants primarily and so on, then I think we pursue from that perspective. But that's, that's my personal view. The numbers that you have here for projected interest rates, I think, are, for the next two years or so, the midpoint, the median is, is reasonable for a triple A organization. Beyond that, visibility gets very difficult, okay? So there are a lot of, there are a lot of things in motion with this, but from the perspective of an initial structure, I, I'm, I'm relatively comfortable, I have no idea what, what we're going to hear tonight with respect to, you know, cost by, by breakout and so on. But I think we're, we're on the right track, and now it's time to hear feedback from our finance committees and, and probably a deeper dive with them and you.
Sure. And can I just say one more thing? I mean, this is kind of, we're defining what the ballpark is tonight, right? And everybody seems to be relatively comfortable with these numbers, but we're really not gonna know what we're getting until we're farther on down the road with the schematic diagrams, and, you know, so we have to be a little bit flexible about how this is gonna work, you know? But it gives, I'm thinking it gives the, the building committee a target to work in, and we can say, look, you know, you got, for example, 8 million bucks to build the administrative building, what do we need to do to fit it roughly into that budget? What are we giving up? What could we potentially do if, you know, we had more dough? At least we got a conversation going, and we're all talking off the same page, right? And I think, if we can get that done tonight, I think we're, we're there, right? I mean, I think we're pretty close to getting agreement from everybody.
How do these figures, the roll-off of the debt service for the town, how is, how does that impact what we've been listening to tonight?
How does it impact what we do?
Yeah, how's it relate?
You're saying the fact that excluded debt is falling?
Excluded debt is falling off.
It doesn't. It doesn't affect what we're talking about tonight, because excluded debt is excluded. So each year that you have the debt service roll-off of excluded debt, that's just a reduction in the amount that's added to the tax levy each year. So each year, there's a calculation of prior year tax levy plus 2.5% plus new growth, then on top of that, you add that current year's excluded debt service, and that's how that is done. So each year, it just comes off the top.
So, but if that was, if that, if this is excluded debt, 8 or 10 million, whatever it is, that would be added on, but don't we have 1 or 2 million dollars of excluded debt coming off each year in the next 12 years?
Yeah, there's a, I, I don't have the number right in front of me, but there, hundreds of thousands of dollars are coming off in the next few years.
It's, but it's akin, I mean, the, how it works structurally for us is that, as a taxpayer in, in town, if we did nothing more, then we would expect that to roll off, and you might see your tax bill go down. You might, okay? There's no assurance that it will, but this is, this is an awful lot like your kid graduating from college saying, great news, I'm going to graduate school. And, so, the, the, ideally, we'd see an increase, or, I'm sorry, decrease individually on our taxes, but as we add to the exclusion, that rate of decrease, if there is one, right? Which you actually see in dollars on flow, right? That rate of decrease is either slowed or non-existent, depending on how much we add to it. And that's exactly the point where you'd want to look at this and say, okay, what's the right number? Because, let's say we go and ask for 8 million from the town, and the town nods their head and says, okay. But if we're not clear with the town that within five years, we expect to come at, come back asking for a similar amount for another building, and then probably within 10 years, there are three other projects that could add another 6 million, you get the idea? You know, there's, we're not gonna roll that debt off fast enough.
No, I don't, I don't expect it to, but I just wanted to.
But it will roll off in the next four years.
But there are other things going on.
But our, our current excluded, excluded debt will roll off.
Well, anyways, that point, the point that I.
You're not gonna see it go down.
So the point, the point that I was just trying to make was, is that we do have this debt that's fairly significant rolling off, which will lessen the impact that this additional debt is gonna have to the community, and I just thought that was a.
To individual despair.
It's not gonna give us, there's no answer here, as Steve said. We've got ongoing projects and stuff that's gonna have to be done. It's just not adding on and piling up and increasing forever. When it rolls off, we get that relief. From what I remember of the chat that you showed us the last time you were here.
It's in the budget.
There's like.
It's about, it's roughly 1, it's 1.4, and in five years, it goes to zero. That means all the schools will finally pay it off and all its debt off. So if, if, for example, I'll just use the 8 million, because that's something we were playing with in the hypothetical there. The middle, we'll just take 3.5, that's the mid-tier. 5, that's 5 to 6, 3,000, that's roughly 1/3 of what the current levy is. So people would see, instead of it going to zero, they would see a number that's only 1/3 of what it is today as that line of the bill, so, yes.
But you have to look at it in the aggregate, because you look at aggregate leverage, we have things like retirement, medical, and some other things that are contingent liabilities that are going up. You know, so, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of action in there, it's more complicated than just plain and.
But that's not necessarily in the excluded debt.
No, it's not. Excluded, it's a little bit, but total debt, total, total leverage is not, is gonna go.
But the excluded debt is dropping off.
It is dropping off.
What we're, what we're ultimately asking for, if, if we settle on a number, we're asking for our neighbors and friends to approve is raising their tax bill by a known amount. Yes, the baseline might not increase as rapidly, or it actually, for some people, might actually decrease, at least in the short term, as that, as the current existing excluded debt matures, okay? But let's, let's be realistic with each other. The likelihood of taxes going down is, well, there's lots of fairy tales, but there's, the likelihood that it's gonna happen is, 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 well, it's almost, almost no scenario under which I can imagine it. And I don't, you know, I don't think anybody is, anybody in, in neighbors or friends expect that that's gonna be the case. So our objective should be to at least empathize with, with homeowners, recognizing that we're, we're trying to figure out ways to do this such that their, the direct impact to their, their cash out is under consideration and recognize, and we recognize that it's a, it's an item.
So, so when you look at that Town Hall project, the final one with additional tax or excluded debt, those numbers are without any debt roll-off. So regardless of the interest, regardless of the note, regardless of the length, those numbers will be, will not be representative with the roll-off of the debt that's currently occurring in the next four years or 1.4 million.
Those are gross numbers, as I understand.
Those are gross. Yeah. That's just for this specific amount of debt service.
It's just for this, for excluded debt.
So Don, what's the, what's the excluded, on the average tax bill right now, what are people paying in excluded principal and interest, you know?
Well, it's above 1,005, if you this year with the debt service, so, 1,005.
Probably like 25,000 homes.
Energy cohesion.
I'm not that good.
What's a 1,005 divided by 2,500?
4,000 homes.
So it's probably like 400 or 500 bucks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and from the chat that Don gave us, the, gave us last time, our total excluded debt is in 2019 is 6 million, a little above 6 million, and that's after, you know, we took off 1 million and, I'm talking about this one here, the long-term.
But that includes water and.
24, that drops down.
Okay, so anyway, to go to another way, then, yes, in 2019, the excluded debt jacket is 1,400,000 roughly, in 2020, it goes to 1,325, in 2021, 1,200,000. 2, 2022 is 911, 2023 is 871, 2024 is 827, so it's gone down, let me just finish, it's gone down to 700,000 since 2019, and then starting in 2025, it's zero. So that's what I was trying to highlight, the fact that, and Steve makes a good point, you can't just wistfully look at that and say, well, it's farming, because it's not. We have obligations and, and things we gotta do. But all I was trying to point out is, is when that rolls off, that's paid, and that's money left over so that we can incur the graduate schools and so forth.
And, you know, and we're all in agreement with that, I mean, I think that's accurate. Again, you know, we were concerned about going to Town Hall for a 14 million dollar ask, because we know we've got public safety buildings, a school roof, you know, then we're talking about up 25 million dollars worth of leverage instead of 16 or 17. So that's why, you know, that's why I was so adamant about getting this thing to a reasonable level, so we have enough room to do some of these other projects we know we're gonna have to do over the next 10. And Kevin's absolutely right, we definitely are getting these, there is a roll-off, there absolutely is, and it gives us room to do some of these other projects. You know, we haven't spent any money on public safety on, on the buildings, I mean, a lot of our buildings have never been touched for a very, very long time.
Yeah, that's, we did do that.
You know, 87 was the last time we spent a lot of money on buildings, and we built this.
No.
Oh, schools, sorry.
So I think from the, from the point of view, what you think would be reasonable, I, you know, I would like to see if we can vote on, you know, a relative number of something not to exceed. And honestly, I, if you don't want to leverage anything, I would say nothing to exceed 12 million dollars. That may be too much, but that's what I would recommend. If we can find monies by the time we get to Town Hall, decision at Town Meeting, we may really have an awful lot of other monies available to knock it down. I just don't want to handcuff or hamstring this building.
Well, just, I mean, I think we need to, we need to give guidance, right? So I'm comfortable with this and, and then continuing the conversations, because ultimately, when we get more numbers and we've had more conversations and we've had the, the benefit of, of advisory and capital conversations, we're gonna see this a little differently and things are gonna start playing out. My, my only concern is I want to make sure that we, we don't cut any corners. I, I think 12 is a high number, so I, I think I'm comfortable with that, but what I don't want to do is get to a point where we can't, we voted, we're not exceeding this number and realizing that there is something really critical that we need to address, you know? I don't want to cut any corners, basically. I want to build the best possible administrative space, that's what we're here for. You know, and I, just as, as an example, I, and this is, you know, I don't, it's not really a conflict, but I'm on the, my insurance board, specifically on healthcare board, but the P and C, property and casualties, all, all they talk about is how a lot of municipalities make bad building decisions, because, oh, it's cheaper, let's not do whatever, let's not put insulation in that wall or this wall, or, I don't want to make any mistakes in building the building that we're gonna regret later on, you know, when you're in there for a year and your pipes start to burst, you had a beautiful building, and then you're displaced again. So I just want to make sure that we're always very smart into, to our first, Steve can probably give me the words verbatim, but our first objective is to, you know, build the best possible highest-use building, and I'm comfortable that we're doing that, I just want to make sure that we don't restrict us from having conversations going forward to do the right thing and make the right decisions on the building.
So an 8 million dollar budget for an administrative space gives you somewhere between 400 and 500 dollars a square foot for construction? That's reasonable, very, very reasonable number. Anything above that is probably unreasonable. So I don't think, from a money point of view, we're restricting anything. You know, if the space becomes a little bit bigger, you use that number, 400 to 500, to figure out, you know, let's, let's say they come back to us and say, we can't live without 25,000 square feet of administrative space. And the argument makes total sense, right? Then you just put that per square foot number against that 25,000, you're gonna come up with a budget. But you gotta, you know, you gotta use some kind of a benchmark on cost, or else.
No, absolutely.
Everybody's gonna go, you know, well, whatever, we'll get a pool on the third floor, right? Spa, spa, steamer, steamer.
I think they already took out that gem, right?
I think it, if the goal is to, to give guidance, I think we've, we've clearly identified there's a capability for us to create financing, assuming that we have the assent and agreement of, say, CPC, capital budget advisory, and, you know, and the prudence of the Chief Financial Officer, Town Finance Director. So if we've got, if we've got something to move forward with, then we've got a plan for a number not to exceed roughly 12 million.
Right.
There's a different discussion in front of us as to how much to ask the town for. I mean, I know where my comfort level is, and frankly, it, I don't know that Kevin was going in the same direction, but I think it's along the same lines. By, by recognizing that we've got roll-off, but we also have future endeavors that we know are coming, and I'm not suggesting for a moment that there's any secret in this, and we've talked about many of these projects for some time, excuse me, and there are potential projects that could arise out of the harbor, or the harbor study, I should say. And one that we have not yet talked about, we have a very active affordable housing steering committee that has a bee under their bonnet to really start moving forward, and a master plan that's giving that some same consideration. We haven't even brought that forward yet. Allowing for as much room as we might, recognizing, Kevin, in this case, your observation that we are rolling off, mind that it'll never, it'll never zero us out, just because a dollar's out of pocket, it won't. But the concept being that we will, in all likelihood, have to come back to our neighbors and friends in the future for other requests. I think we need to limit the request at this town meeting to the smallest amount possible for an override, recognizing that there's still a cost in excess of that if one, the entire project.
Absolutely.
Okay? And, you know, that's, I don't think that's sleight of hand as much as it is recognizing that we may have to crack a piggyback, okay?
And, and this is a pretty fairly prudent budget, you know, and if we get lucky and we get some grants or the state shows up, you know, you know, we can net, we're gonna get it done for less.
I'd actually.
You know, and we still have to vote on the option, two or three. If we vote on three, we've got two, you know, we've got some clarity in how we finance.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we get the, the desirable relative budget, then look at the options, because if we don't have the budget, then one of these options may not necessarily be on the table. So we have to look at the money that's available first, you know, the options.
One, one final item. I simply propose, as a matter of policy on this particular project, given that we have an interest and desire in gaining access to grants, primarily from either 501(c)(3)'s or from the state, that any funds that we take in, which are in excess of the project cost, would be used to either escrow or prepay, to the extent our call, outstanding amounts of the bond. So in other words, it goes to a direct debt reduction, to the extent that that is legally feasible, okay?
Absolutely.
And so as a matter of policy, and I, frankly, I would go one step further than that and just propose that we make it an objective for Chris and staff over the course of the project to ardently pursue those funds.
And pay it down this weekend prior to.
Well, it doesn't, even if it's post-funded, even if it's post-funded.
Yep.
So, you know, there's, we all saw the email go around about as much as 3 million dollars potentially being available through the governor's office and a grant and so on. The likelihood of the full amount coming around is, is, is small, but gaining access to some of that could either close a gap or help us to overfund the project, which in turn would, under this policy, be a net benefit to the taxpayer.
Yep.
And so in the past, so as an example, you know, there's a, a project that shall be not named, was appropriated, they appropriated 3/4 of a million dollars to get this project done. They then found a, a similar amount from the state, so all in, they had funding of 1.5 million. They did not take the money and apply it back to the original project, and they ended up spending 100% more than they should have to get the project done, and they used it as a, you know, there were mistakes that were made, didn't you? This is long before Chris, this was a long time ago.
Not happened.
But, you know, that was, that's a game that gets played, and we don't want to play that game anymore, right? That's not what we want to do.
Those days are over.
Yep. So.
So I would ask then, if we consider the project a total of 12 million, whatever comes in that we can knock off from grants, state monies, federal monies, CPC and anything else, to knock it off from there, but I think that'll be a reasonable question.
So, so I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, I, I really like the idea of having So, so I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, I, I really like the idea of having eight for the administrative building and four for Old Town Hall, so I just don't want to lump it in as a 12 number. I'd like to have some kind of discussion around how we can segregate the funds so we're doing eight for administrative and four for, four for the Old Town Hall.
I think it's difficult to segregate.
Well, I don't think so. I, I think that's a way of giving guidance to the committee so that the committee knows what they're doing. Renovating, renovating an old building versus building a new building are two different kind of fish.
I guess I'm looking more at the total project cost.
You won't get my approval on this if we don't do it. I'll just vote against it.
You know, I mean, well, to be fair, the CPC funding would have to go to the old building, you know? And I, I mean, I, I don't know that, I would feel like we have enough information to even make that determination because, you know, we're talking the, the atrium area and, you know, how do you apportion one piece of the building, you know, the, the, the systems? You know, is that considered historical, if it's housed in the old building but it's feeding the new? I mean, I don't know if we want to get into those weeds.
So can I suggest we vote on the options first before we go ahead and vote on the budget?
Yeah, I guess the problem was, I want to get the budget first and then we can see the options and, you know, what we can afford. Steve? I realize it sounds like parsing words, but there's a, there's a financing plan in front of us which effectively budgets what we can afford. But I want to make sure we're segregating that from, at the moment, any particular amount that we might request from the taxpayer at Town Meeting, okay? In other, or said differently, we've reviewed a financing, okay? In its, in its most generous terminology, it is rough, okay? And so my question to you as the board is, given that we've arrived at a number that we know that the town can support through a structural plan that is partly directly financed by new debt and partly by our own resources, are we comfortable with the gross number and the rough outlines of the plan? Which essentially says we're being reasonably creative in a, with the approach. If that's the case, then we have a basis for talking to the committee about a number that the town is reasonably certain that, given agreements and analysis, we can, we can produce, right? And, I'm sorry, and subject to votes at Town Meeting, right? But if that's the case, then I think the number exists. The question then is, you know, it is probably for another meeting, is what are we going to ask for as a structure?
Sure. So moved.
But I'm uncomfortable, look, I mean, I, you know.
Did you get that?
Four minutes, but I agree with you.
What's the motion?
We've finally got a consensus that nobody understands.
Can you restate that? In two sentences, yes. Move, move that we direct the Town Hall Building Committee to consider a prospective budget of 12 million dollars for the purposes of evaluating building options for both the 1857 structure and new administrative space. Okay? Further move, this is my second sentence, you should recognize this being an attorney, go for it. Further, recognize, move that we direct Town Finance Director, Chief Financial Officer, and Request of Advisory Committees, thorough, thorough analysis of the finance plan, financing plan as presented this evening and other options as they exist.
Second.
Subject? Yeah, you got it. Any discussions?
I'm, I'm uncomfortable just using a round number of 12 without putting limits on the potential amount of money we'd be going to Town Meeting to ask for as excluded debt. So in order to move this forward and being a cooperative member of the Board of Selectmen, I just want to go on record in saying, please don't come back in May and ask for 12 million in excluded debt to get the project done because, you know, I don't want to get led down the road and then have a crazy conversation in April about a 12 million dollar debt exclusion that's not gonna work. I mean, I think we're all really clear what's been presented here implicitly, which is eight million excluded, four million other funds, and, and we're all gonna agree that that's what our intent is here tonight. If we can do that, I'm good.
Absolutely.
I'll vote for it.
Absolutely.
I, for what it's worth, I'd be, to be very clear, I am extraordinarily cautious of piercing an eight million dollar level, and I have nothing more to base that on than my instinctive familiarity with the town's finances. That's it.
And seeing that debt roll-off and knowing there are other problems coming along, we've articulated that all night, yeah.
And again, the way this motion is phrased, you, you and we will have plenty of time to reconsider that. So if it comes back later, there's nothing in this motion that locks us into it, gives us the flexibility that Diane was talking about, so I'll try and.
Okay. I'm also proud of it. As for vote, roll call vote, please.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Sugar, aye.
Jack and Eily, aye.
Steve Gomer, aye.
Okay, good, thank you. Next up are the options of the.
Yes.
So you have a couple of options.
Bring up some more fellows here.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don. Good work.
So you remember Wendell, Todd Sow, from the firm. Ryan Foster is the new architect on the job.
I grant.
I'd like to say hello to Ryan. And you remember Shane as well.
I'm gonna move there so you guys can sit together.
I have some plan, if you, no, these are a little different than what I handed out to you last week.
Go ahead and hand out these.
You can see this a little better, that?
These little ones now?
It does, they're turning out.
How's it different?
A few of the things that, that they did not like about option two, they jiggered a little bit with, but there's a couple just, they're little things.
So these are different from what we had the other day?
Yes. So just go by the date, go by the date on the plans.
I'm just gonna keep this latest one. Do you get this?
Do you need my help?
Yeah. Okay. Sure.
So this is essentially an overview of the feasibility study, which is what, again, was what was voted on on December 4th, option two and option three. Option two is the smaller footprint, option three is the larger footprint. And I'll let Ryan head it away, come here.
So the set of plans that you just received, we are showing three options. The first plans that you're looking at are what was approved in November from the feasibility study to kind of serve as a reference point. That's what's up on the screen, it's our first slide. At this was the archive in the basement level. It does have the land planning, the treasurer, and the assessor on the, the town clerk on the first floor, which is really desirable from the office use standpoint. And on the second floor has the medium-sized meeting room and large meeting room and the additional offices. From this, our first item that we looked to do was to condense the footprint. What we ended up coming up with was moving the elevator into the original footprint of the existing building. We're able to use a slightly smaller elevator when it's inside the existing building footprint. We also moved the archives out of Town Hall, the basement of the Town Hall, to another potential location in the basement of the library. Doing that allowed the large meeting room to be moved down to the lower level. The change in plans from what you saw, I believe, last week to the plans that you're looking at now primarily occur in the office space on the first and second floor, the land planning suite and the town clerk, which were, we were informed were the most important items to have on the first floor, are the two elements that are on the first floor, with the remainder, remaining offices up on the second floor and utilizing the second floor of the existing Town Hall for office space. In option number three, that we'll take a look at, the main change from this is moving all office space out of the second floor of Town Hall and into the addition. Down at the basement level, we would still have the large meeting room, a good amount of storage, also moved the staff break room down to the lower level. On the first floor, it is more desirable from the way Town Hall works to have the town clerk, the land planning, the assessor and the treasurer on the first floor, as those are the most highly visited locations. On the second floor, all the offices, as you see, are in the addition with the existing space on the second floor inside of Town Hall being designated for future community space. Gives a lot of flexibility. Obviously, with this layout, there is a larger footprint for the addition with the additional amenities that have been put into the addition space. On the next slide, Wendell, dive into the addition item.
So that, you know, if you, if you look at it, you know, from kind of an overall, how do the three plans relate to each other size-wise? So that the dark blue is the plan, the footprint that we finished with the end of the feasibility study. So that that had a, and we're looking at basically new construction net area. So that that had a 4,100 square foot was the footprint of that on the first floor. If you look at our option two that Ryan just went over, that's the light blue line. Its, its overall dimensions are very similar, except that the atrium space becomes a little bit smaller and also the stair, in some plans it was actually stacked bathrooms, that was there. So that that became about 3,650 as a square footage, so about 500 square feet less. If you look at the dark red plan, that's our option three. And so that you can see that the projection away from the building becomes about 13 feet longer, 12 and a half feet longer. And so that rather than, you know, the 64 and a half feet, it's 77 feet is that dimension. And the other dimension, it goes from in, you know, 60, 61 feet to 68 feet. So it's a larger footprint because we're moving all the office space from the second floor of the historic building into the addition. So it's basically can be a function independently from the historic building.
And an additional staircase, correct?
An additional staircase. Our co-consultant is still reviewing that, we're kind of right at the borderline of that. So we wanted for today's meeting to show it included, you know, I don't think you want to be right at the borderline of, of that point. So we've included it now.
And the additional staircase is where, up at the, where the atrium is?
No, no, that's the staircase that's the primary circulation, but it's at the opposite end of the building, the south end, where it becomes basically an egress stair.
And that second staircase, just because of the square footage?
The size, all that, we're getting very close to that borderline, and so we've included it now, we're having our co-consultant look at it. But I also think just as the planning, I don't think you want to be, you know, it's a total travel distance from the furthest room to the stairway, you're dead at corridor length, so that there's a bunch of things that go into that evaluation.
And just, just so everybody that's not looking at this plan, the elevator is actually in the old section of Town Hall.
Correct.
And people would access, like, this floor here usually by either one of the two staircases or the elevator that would be in the old building.
And the doors, yeah, from the atrium, atrium space.
Yeah, from the atrium, okay.
So, and also just to be clear, we did spend a couple hours with Lisa Pratt at the Dramatic Club, so we have, and we have socialized this idea with the folks that are in that space a lot of the time.
All right, just a question. So do you have the same numbers for the breakout for the second floor, phase one, two and three, like you did for the first floor?
They're essentially the same square footage as.
As before?
As the first floor, there's really no difference in square footage between basement, first floor, second floor in terms of gross area.
So I have a question, it's second for Chris. Do you see from functional point of view and the physical difference, is it from the town function point of view, do you see a huge difference from running a town?
We will, we will work with whatever the town approves.
In other words, neither.
That's not what we want you to say.
In other words, neither of the two is.
Bring back the town plan.
We believe both, both are workable.
Yeah, again, we will make whatever the town approves work.
I mean, there's nothing inherently wrong with you to design the field.
I, I think one of the conversations we will continue to have during schematic is how to best locate departments for the best ease of access by residents and the best, you know, flow, so, you know, we don't have, people have to interact all the time being, you know, here and on opposite corners of the building. It's not that big a space anyway. And again, if people have to go up and downstairs sometimes, that's good. I, it's good for me, it's good exercise. We, I, I don't want to have to, one of the things we've tried to do and, and will be maintained in any of these options is consolidated offices like planning permits and inspections. So you go to one place, you don't have to go find the conservation agent one corner of the building and help things in the other corner of the building. Those are preserved no matter how this sets up. What floor they were on may be a little bit different, that whole unit, but we want to keep them all together, so it's one-stop shopping. Treasure collector, you go to the treasure collector office, you don't have to go to one place to pay taxes, but pay one bill, but it's no place. And, you know, so, so, and again, the town match office is in one place, you know, so like I'm in one corner and Tracy's in the other corner.
Stephen?
Couple, a couple questions. One, the bigger footprint, so the third option, is that gonna impact the parking outside and, you know, significantly and insignificantly?
It certainly will impact the site. So that, you know, it may mean where we have a double-loaded corridor coming in with right-angle parking, you may end up with parallel parking on one side as you enter there. So it will have an impact.
Just think later in, in this process, that's something the board should talk about is parking in general because it impacts sort, sort of the whole town, which we just don't have enough parking. And then.
I guess the other thing, let me, sorry, that we may look at, if, if that's the option selected by the board is, we may also look at changing proportions of it somewhat. So maybe it goes closer to the street and not out so far, so.
Right.
I think we need kind of some overall of direction and then we can kind of look at, you know, how do you proportion that volume?
Sure. Excellent. One of my concerns with the third option is just the second floor of the Old Town Hall, which I know is, has got a lot of structural challenges, I guess, to, to make that useful space. But, you know, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces that are listed there as future community space. My understanding, just looking at it, it looks like it would be fairly similarly laid out to what is there now, no?
And you're, you're absolutely right because we have to work with the trusses that are there.
Right.
So the trusses go from the ceiling to the floor of that space, so it divides them into those spaces, so whether they're offices, whether they're community meetings, you're basically fixed with this, the physical space.
Okay.
We're able to make the center corridor substantially wider by removing that center post.
Okay. So I, I guess the other question I have is just in terms of running the building, operationally speaking and for efficiencies, if we have the second floor of this building that's not being used because, you know, it's gonna take a while, since we're not locating departments there, I mean, certainly I can see uses down the road, but, you know, is there any, is it, is it, can we shut it off? Can we not heat it? I mean, I, I just worry that we're gonna have, you know, a pretty significant amount of square footage just sitting empty.
There are several things that you'll, you'll need to do, is that the sprinkler system will need to cover the entire old building and the new building.
Of course, yep.
Life safety in terms of egress will need to be done so that, and also accessibility, if anybody enters that space, you know, you may not have to finish the offices, but for all practical purposes, you're doing the more expensive part of it.
Right.
So if I could just add to that conversation, a lot of what Jack has been talking about over the last few weeks in terms of whether a 501(c)(3) shows interest, whether you use those rooms for rehearsal space because perhaps the hall is being rented by somebody else and the Dramatic Club isn't soaking up all that square footage just for that, but they could rehearse upstairs, whether you leased those offices. I think there's a lot of potential there. I don't know that it's the purview of this committee to, to market that space.
Absolutely.
But I do think there's potential and I, I will say my thinking has come around a little bit here because I do think it gives the town some flexibility in terms of not building out every square inch of what we have. out every square inch of what we have. And if in ten, fifteen, twenty years, the town needs that space back and you're just leasing it, well, when the lease is up, you can take it back. So that's just another way of looking at that, that may even be income generating at some point down the line for you. Just a thought.
I would think that it probably would give the town fifty years of expansion space.
Right.
If you do need expansion space.
Right.
That was actually the question I had sent. Do you think that from the flexibility point of, of the two-building design, do you think that the third option or the la, the latest has more flexibility for potential use for, if the town needs space or if there needs to be space for options?
You already have the space built, so you would just essentially change the use of it, so it's...
So from a flexibility point, it'd be...
Can I, let me just give you an example. So the town won with this, with the, this safe harbor co-hasset, this Dr. Free Community Grant, and now we have to house folks. And, you know, we want to have good space. We're actually still working on that, you know, it's, it's being housed temporarily at the second floor, the senior center, using sharing space for the time being on the second floor. There might be another grant like that that we don't even know, maybe there's some kind of special education grant or some kind of tutoring or AP or things that we don't even know might happen today and there might be a need for some kind of, that wouldn't be traditional, you know, town administrative space, but like this, that's, this is a five-year grant and, you know, we all hope the opioid crisis goes away. That said, we have to work at it really hard to make that, who knows what the next thing is, right? So to have that kind of, just to have a place to go. I mean, I went around and looked at a closet at the library and I had people stalking me afterwards that, what are you doing? Take away my space.
There's a trustee in the room.
Poor, poor Mary, no, 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 no. And we talked, she came to talk, she came to talk to me afterwards.
She was one of the ones.
And Mary and Brian were over at the, or Jason were over at the water department and I get the chairman of the water department calling me, what are you doing? What are you doing over at our water department?
She called all of us, don't worry.
Yeah, so, so, you know, there really isn't a lot of space. I mean, you know, it's a pretty compact place, all things considered, and it's not that you need elbow room for bigger offices, it's just that sometimes you need a little flexibility. Maybe you're remodeling something, maybe, you know, something has to be painted or something has to happen, you need like a swing space even for somebody. We don't really have anything to do that, or even in a disaster recovery circumstance where something bad happened, right? We, we, we don't have a lot of real swing space here. So it, 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 it does give you a degree of flexibility that just doesn't exist. Not that you need it, use it for that immediately, but it's just there.
I, I'm terrible at judging what I'm actually looking at here, but I was born without conceptual skills. So I have to ask, it looks to me like the offices above the eighteen fifty-seven structure on the second floor, pretty sizable by compares, comparison to offices in the newer structure. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wouldn't build them to that size today?
No, no, I, I, I recognize that you're working within an envelope and so on, but my question is this. Assuming that we have no real clue as to what we might put there three years from now when the project is completed, right? Maybe it goes to community uses, maybe we've got folks who would like to lease it, maybe you've got a dramatic club that would like to reserve two of those spaces for rehearsals. Is there a way of making the space flexible enough that you can either open it up or close it down a bit? I, I, I'm asking about, I suppose, design systems more than the actual structure here, but I'm thinking about making the maximum use of the space since those...
You don't have much flexibility in terms of the size of the rooms.
The trusses.
You're fixed on the north-south direction by your trusses. And your circulation basically needs to be the center corridor going east-west. And again, it's based by the trusses, it's based by your, your center post of the trusses, which is not needed structural element. So you... Yeah, so essentially you don't have flexibility, it's not a place to have a big open space and a moving partition because you've got a trust there.
Okay, so the space itself is restrictive?
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Then I'd ask it just in a different way. If you wanted to open a space, is there a, is there a structural element that you could use for that, what is now the wall on which the doorway is placed, where that could be fully opened?
From the corridor to the...
From to the corridor.
Yeah, that, that wall is non-structural, you don't need to have it, other than being able to have a corridor as a means of egress.
Right, okay.
So you need the, you need to meet the life safety components that it provides, but it's a non-structural element.
Okay. Any other question?
Can I just ask a couple, this, this option three assumes that there's no floor leveling between the two buildings?
Correct, that's correct. And option two does not have that quality either.
Okay.
It's the feasibility, so option two is also unequal floor heights between the two. There's a stair equal between the two buildings, but the floors are not level.
Got it.
Okay.
And it's a corner post elevator that provides full accessibility between...
And two doors. Slab-to-slab height on the, on the administrative building, what kind of...
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen feet.
Which is essentially the minimum good practice for a building of this size.
And then you have to run, you'd have to run potentially some mechanical electricals, so you're going to get a lower...
Yeah.
You're going to get something below thirteen.
You're going to be...
The chase is going to be two feet.
Probably nine, six, yeah, probably around nine, six, nine, six, ten feet. Something between nine and ten feet. You have the floor structure and you have the...
So we think this is ten, eleven?
Probably just nine, nine, three or something.
Yeah, okay. So we'll get roughly the same.
Yeah.
So the last massing that you saw, the, the, basically the front view, the 3D view, had, is six feet taller than what we're looking at right now because we're taking that six feet out, which is what we use to level the floors between the two buildings. So that's gone now.
And I think in theory, the proportion should work out better with that lower floor to floor height.
And the roof shape will be a little bit different? Will the, the slope on the roof be different now because you're taking out six feet?
Maybe.
Once a plan is approved, that's our next step.
I have my list I'm holding on to.
He's not telling you say yes.
I know Mark wants minarets. What roof?
So I, I, I'm just curious whether the committee has a recommendation or, or, you know, just in general what you're, you're thinking of the options two and three? I mean, I know we've driven a lot of it and I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you're, you're like, we met and absolutely this is, this is what we think we, you know, we believe is the right path.
What we've tried to do as a committee is respond to the different concerns...
Right.
Which have not been uniform among the board's selectmen and present some options. So that's what we have done. I mean, and there's different ways of looking at it, from, from purely what we started out with, I think as our list as a committee and, and with the town manager and, and who we wanted to have on the first floor and accessibility and creating some joint space between the two buildings. Option three allows for more of that to happen because the footprint's bigger. It costs more. You know, that's, that's pretty simple. So I'm loathe to make a recommendation for the committee.
Fair, I, I just want to make sure if you had one that you would give to us, but I appreciate it because we have had you chasing your tail a lot.
I think it's fair, it's very, I think it's a very clear choice too. I mean, I think if you look at the absolute most efficient use of everyone's needs and concerns and consider the absolute lowest cost, two falls into that space. But if you look, want a little more flexibility, if you want to have the people in the same, working in the same building, that's what option three recommends. It's a little more expensive, but you've got that shock absorber of additional space if necessary.
And I think Josiah had a comment, and since he's our architect on staff here.
Well, what he said, I was going to say. The first one is more cost-effective, but the challenge is making it cohesive between the buildings, which I think can be done. I don't think it's necessarily the case right now. And then the third one obviously is more money and the challenge is the mass and how it'll relate to the existing building. I don't think it's, one is better than the other, I think there are two things...
That'll get tweaked and worked on.
Yeah, there's just a question for, for the architects. You know, they were asked to prepare option three in about two or three weeks. I think you've done a really great job of advancing it at this stage, but do you see opportunities to reduce massing, to reduce the scale, to reduce the size of it as we work through the next phase of this project if option three were considered?
I would see the next step is to kind of refine and develop it, that it's not going to be two thousand square feet smaller.
There are ways to shape it to, to reduce the potential impact.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So we talked a little bit earlier about right now, I mean, we've added thirteen feet to the width from the common. That may not be the most desirable thing. And that's a bit of what Josiah was speaking to. So as Wendell spoke earlier, let's look to expand it maybe on the, on the eastern west side and see how that relates a little bit and then that, that change is not so dramatic.
I think, honest to God, it's a wonderful juggling act between machetes, chainsaws, and, you know, another sharp instruments. And I, I, we eventually came around as a board to set some objectives. I, frankly, I have no clue what the building's going to look like. That's a, that's, that's what you're hired for, right? Give us something that works within those objectives. And from that perspective, I do believe that there is a, there's a really good reason to keep a cohesive working structure in a modern envelope. I'm, I, I, I have no construction experience, so I, I don't pretend to have any expertise on this. But I do recognize that there's a level of common sense that goes with adhering to those objectives and I would think that that would be ultimately, ultimately what we're looking to do from that perspective. This third option addresses that and addresses it pretty well. I don't know what the footprint eventually looks like, I mean, that's, you know, we've got some space to work with on this plot. And so let's figure out the most efficient way to make those objectives come to life, if that's my opinion. We've got a basis for being able to conceptually apply funds to it and town meeting votes and analyses. Let's move on.
So I just want to say one last thing. One of my biggest concerns about putting offices up in the Old Town Hall is, let's say we go ahead and approve option two, we go ahead and renovate the hall, do all that plaster work, get everything done the way we want to, then all of a sudden we decide to reconfigure the office space upstairs and we have to pull down the ceilings to run, you know, trunk lines for IT or whatever. You know, I think long-term having offices, having town offices in the Old Town Hall is going to be operationally less efficient and potentially, if we want some flexibility in the way we staff these spaces, may cause some real problems for us going forward. And I think once we get Old Town Hall renovated and looking great, I'd hate to have us have to go pull the walls down or do, you know, just think about it, running, you know, cable for, for computers. I mean, it becomes a huge problem. When you have modern structures and you've got chasing in the floors and you've got the ceilings all set up, you know, you basically pop out these tiles and run your lines and you're done, you know, and so long-term efficiency and the cost of operations probably lower, sticking most of the high-use stuff into a new building. And that's the major reason why I didn't want that in the Old Town Hall. Plus the cost of actually doing the renovations on the second floor in the Old Town Hall.
So you're aiming for number three?
Number three. If you, if you comment, you're probably spending, even if you don't finish the space in the second floor, you're spending three-quarters of the cost to make it HVAC, like safety and sprinklers, so you're spending the bulk of the money anyway.
Yeah, so basically the cost driver is Old Town Hall. Yeah, that's where the cost drives.
You're... You don't, it's clearly option three is more expensive than option two, you're building more square footage.
Correct, but the cost driver is, is, is Old Town Hall. It's the renovation.
It's totally square footage, it's... It's similar that we were building the twenty, two, seven hundred square feet of unfinished space in the new building. We're building a new building.
To look at it differently, our objective, our number one objective is modern, flexible, efficient administrative space, right? You were given that as your number one objective, would you start working on Old Town Hall?
That was our number one objective?
It is.
Probably not.
It's the voted number one objective. So there's, the, the, look, we recognize that option three, from your perspective and from your plans, at least from this initial go-round, is more expensive from, you know, versus some other options you had.
Correct.
We also recognize that we've been late to the party to give this direction, which is not helpful to anyone. But having done so, and now finally have gotten to, have gotten to the point where we can actually look at it from a fiscal standpoint and say, I think we've, we've got a working mechanism. If we can reach an agreement as to what the preference is for the board this evening, then you've got some direction and within that cost envelope, you've got an ability to come back and say, we can do this, but we can't do that, or whatever it might be. But you've got parameters around that, that decision, okay? And so, yeah. I just want to mention, although I have no experience in, in architecture, we did three separate build-outs for basically service industry, medical business. One was not felt to be useful, too expensive. One of the problems was we had to build that again because of flexibility concerns and lots of things, OSHA, all the other minor details that make you end up building on a whole new floor. So my biggest concern is flexibility and having the ability to do that at a reasonable cost. I think from what I can see, number three seems to have the most available flexibility and although it's more expensive, been through it three times, two times we did it, one time we had to kind of stop it midstream because it was too expensive, I would lean towards number three. Again, I'm not an architect, but I just know what, what it entails and I'm sure it's going to look good on the outside, so I'm not worried about that. That's, that's my view of this.
Good, and, and I'm, I'm kind of having a little bit of an epiphany too in realizing that, that second floor of the Old Town Hall is, is, it's just not congruent with this building. It really is like a separate building and, and that probably is not what we want in a modern, you know, Town Hall. So, you know, I'm look, I'm looking at it like, how can we use that? I'm an empty nester and I'm like, why can't we just get rid of like seventy-five percent of my house now because we're never in it?
Move upstairs.
Right, exactly. We're kind of living in two rooms. So, so I'm thinking of it from that, with that lens, but I realize, you know, even now, that's like the last place anybody really, it's just, they're just kind of off, but...
So we'll need a kitchen, you've got to get with her and get her kitchen.
Yeah, well, whatever, we'll talk about that later. Anyway, so I, 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 I think option three, I really am concerned about massing and, and size and proportion and scale and, and, and doing everything we can to make it fit the, these environs because this is a historic area, but, but that's...
You're going to hurt your back.
That's your job.
Don't do that.
Yeah.
Steve's giving us an example of why we need a new two-and-a-half Town Hall, by the way.
So Steve doesn't jump in the middle of the winter time and we need some air.
There's no screen we can push.
There's kick guards on the windows.
I'm fine, fine, Steve's fine.
So I, I guess I'd ask for a vote of the two designs, those in favor of the second design and those in favor of the third design. Looks like we have a consensus for the third design. I'd ask for a motion that we vote for approval of the option three, the larger building and slightly more expensive for the, I do, is there a motion before?
Some vote?
Is there a second?
Second.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Roll call opens.
Kevin McCarthy, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schur, aye.
Jack and Eily, aye.
Steve Gohmert, aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you for your hard work.
One thing I'm going to leave with you, it's just an updated schedule from Shane on just the milestone dates. We just want to back it out from town meeting.
More homework.
And so just a note though, so we'll be seeing you plenty.
So I think they will be coming back twice, like the twenty-seventh of February and then the twenty-seventh of March, when we'll have that schematic cost estimates, so we'll know that, the cost for scheme three.
The other note that I should have made in the book of square footage is that they're all, all four are calculated the same way, their net square footage, so they, they're all the area within the inside of the exterior walls. walls. So at some point, you may be given gross square footages that are the outside of the exterior walls, other times you'll be given program square footages. Whatever it give you, we'll be calculating all the consistent way, but you have three different sets of square footages that you...
The cost estimates will be to the outside of it, that's the... Other cost estimates are kind of, so it'll be a little bit higher than this.
Okay.
So you're gonna give us both gross and usable, so how are you gonna do it?
We'll do net. Okay, if you want three, we'll give you gross, we'll give you net inside the exterior walls, and if you want to do program square footage, it would be the program and non-circulation, non-stairway, non, you know, toilets and that sort of space.
And they'll be a quiz at the end.
Yeah. Okey-dokey. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Pleasure. Good to see you all. Good to see you, Mark. You gonna row tomorrow?
Steve and I have the same bag, no? I tried that this morning. Did you? What's that?
Chris, I just have a quick question. Can I just ask one quick question related to this proposed schedule? What's the focus group? If you don't know, that's fine.
I'll find out.
All right, thank you.
I think it has to do with design work, obviously.
Okay, okay. So maybe within their group, they have a... Okay, that's all I just wanted, whether there was something.
So next up is license, permits, and events. The industrial walk, they're gonna redesign the path, so they're actually gonna come back to us. Next up is the Georgia South Shore Bike Race, 9/22/2018.
My name's Denise Rondo, I'm the director of the foundation. Nice to see you all.
Hey, Denise.
This is our eighth year hosting this event. The model has changed. We started in Waukesha State Park, we built the Hingham Cohasset Situate in Marwell. Last year, we had about 200 riders. We anticipate about the same number this year. The event has expanded, but had expanded more at the park level, okay, because we host other events there. But our riders, that really hasn't changed. I work with Sergeant Trainer on the routes. We have two potential routes. One is our traditional route, one is an alternative route, depending on if in fact there is construction taking place. And traditionally, what I've done in the past is that I would, you know, be in contact with him sometime during the beginning of August to get update on how things are, and then we would make adjustments based on if we need to change the route.
Any questions? Is there a contingent route that has been reviewed by public safety?
Yes, Sergeant Trainer, yes. Both routes that you have attached here are approved.
Selectment discounts?
Oh, hold on. Speaking of Sergeant Trainer.
So I'd ask for approval of the Eighth Annual Georgia South Shore Athletic Festival, Saturday, September 22nd, with the contingency route if necessary.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next up is a road race by the Sees, the Rotary Club, 3/25/2015. Welcome. How are you?
Good evening.
Hi, Linda.
Hello, everyone. I'm Linda Becter, and I'm the race director of the Cohasset Road Race Club. Normally 10K, this year five miles. As you all know, Cohasset Rotary Club is a service organization, and we are all volunteers. We've given more than a million dollars to Cohasset High School students and scholarships, and we fund equal-scale projects, and you need it, and we do it. So we are very much...
Polio eradication.
Polio eradication. That's why I love that you guys always help me out with all of this. And I actually brought first shores this time, because we always talk about the road race, but we, I wanted you all to have a first shore about Cohasset Rotary in particular. So as you know, so this is the 42nd road race, but the first year that it can't be a 10K. So we have created a five-mile route. It's essentially the same route. The only difference is that the start is still on the common, but we're gonna go north on the common. We're gonna go up Jerusalem Road, and until it meets up with Jerusalem and Atlantic and continues on. So we're trying to do it with minimal changes for volunteers and for things that we, you know, have to deal with the police and fire, and barricades and safety issues. So it's a shorter race, it'll be done earlier. I have no idea how many people to expect, because it's a totally different animal, but I'm, we're going with the number 800 to 1,000. You know, normally, it could be as many as 1,200, so we're happy with whatever we get. And people seem to be excited about it. People have always wanted to run it, but thought it was too far.
Too much.
Yeah, they don't know that I've added it, though, although I think I want to do it right now, so it's shorter, but it's still here, so I'm not gonna hand up the elevation chart. And I have insurance, and I mean, I literally have the insurance certificates right here. What can I tell you?
The best night shirts. Long-sleeve shirts.
100% cotton, long-sleeve shirts and hot dogs. So we're not the most health-conscious race, but it's just a hot dog.
Okay, and we just ran five.
Yeah. No, just, I'm trying to find the map, which I don't...
I brought, I mean, I printed one out if you'd like to...
More for the people at home, so after, when you get to Jerusalem and Atlantic, you'll take a left?
Yeah, and then that meets up with the...
And go down Jerusalem, and then up Forest Avenue, and it's the same.
Correct. So really, my biggest concern as race director is just that change of route for the others, because they're not used to having the race go past our house, and won't realize that the road is close, so that's why we're gonna work very closely with the police and the mariner, and get the word out as much as possible that this is the race, and it's just for this year. And hopefully, it won't disturb too many people. The roads are only closed for a little while, and it's even shorter than that.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
No, other than I'm just gonna recuse myself just because I'm a Rotarian.
So I'd ask for a motion to approve the road race, or the road race for the Sees, but road by 3/25/2018.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One not voting, four all passing. Next up is...
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you very much.
Hope it's safe.
Thank you very much. We're always looking for runners and volunteers, you guys.
Got it.
You're more likely to volunteer from this crew.
That's right.
So the next one is a public hearing for installation of underground facilities. So, Chris, these are National Grid, which is looking for basically upgrading some of the infrastructure.
The residential service.
Residential service. So the town of Cohasset Board of Selection, public hearing notice installation of underground facilities. Cohasset Board of Selection will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 13, 2018, at 7:10 PM. We're running a little late, but I don't relate, and the Selectman's Office Town Hall, Fort Worth Highway Avenue, class Massachusetts. Consider requests from National Grid and Massachusetts Electric Company. They are seeking permission for the installation of underground facilities, including to locate manholes, wires, and ducts, including necessary staining and protecting fixtures along the following public way. Install approximately 50 feet of two-to-three-inch PVC conduit casing concrete from existing manhole one to tunnel one to customer's property at 440 Pearson Road for new customer service. The public is invited to have a proposal writing events about hearing, one person at the hearing, Board of Selection. We're opening the meeting, so just introduce yourself and a quick what's the plan?
Sure. Tim Laker, National Grid Electric, 100 East Ashland Street, brought it. So as you previously stated, we are petitioning for approximately 50 feet of two-three-inch electric ducts, PVC ducts, for a new service that's gonna be going in to 440 Jerusalem Road. That is from existing manhole 121 onto the proposed handle that is on the property of 440.
Any questions?
Construction.
When you do this, obviously taking that part of the road and so forth and so on, I do want to make sure that we have assurances that, you know, that some of that's newly paved road that we've done recently, and even if it hadn't been, well, it is actually newly paved road, that when you're done, that you return and restore the road completely exactly as it is now. And I want to make sure that that's a condition, and that we... Because we've had it before, and I'm sure that if you say you're not going to, you aren't, but I'd like to have some assurance that that's not gonna occur, and that... So, Chris is not here, I don't know how you build that into what we approve, or what, or what's your comment on that?
Our policy is always to restore the section of road that is disturbed to previous or better condition, so.
So Kevin, are you implying that, you know, the whole road gets paved, and it's just not a patch? If you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I want to make sure that, yeah, that what we have there that is existing, the appearance and so forth, that it's important to others, too, yeah, is restored to the way it is now.
We should ask Brian.
So I want to get that specified down, so we don't have false expectations here, and also that the citizens, you know, don't, you know, have a patch in their road, you know? So why don't we ask Brian?
Because it is new road there, and patches...
So, sorry.
You understand the question? We're just asking a question, but I need to...
Yeah, we want to make sure that the road is...
So it's not under moratorium. It's just at the limits of Rust Way where we paved, so it's...
It's still the old road, is that what it is?
It's still the old road, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's not under road protection.
Great. That's easy.
This is for one lot?
I believe so, yeah.
It's for the new house on the corner of Rust Way, is that what we're gonna for?
Yeah.
Well, right here.
The second one, yep.
How deep? I'm sorry, you said manhole number 121, but I, you know, I would have no clue where that is. Is that... Does the manhole itself sit within the roadway?
I believe this specific manhole does sit within the roadway, yeah.
There's a schematic in our package.
Yeah, I was, okay.
Brian, what's the schedule for that paving of that section of the road? Are we even on, is it even scheduled?
Yeah, it's several years old.
Okay.
So that was part of the Little Harbor sewer paving.
Yep.
That area.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd ask for approval of the work to be done by National Grid and Massachusetts Electric Company, as stated in the hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
So we'll close the hearing, the public hearing notice for installation of underground facilities. Next up is the public hearing for liquor license. Board of selection, public hearing notice, the Board of Selection acting as liquor license